Will now be recorded.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Lander County Commission meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain, and Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners, July 9th, 2020. All right, this is also being held via teleconference. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Art, you wanna go ahead and lead us in the pledge, please?
I'd like to lead this to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have a moment of silence. All right, moving on. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch. From 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM, any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioner reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Keith? Were there any? Um, oh, I'm sorry. I'm gonna start with you. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I jumped out of order, I'm sorry.
I'll take it.
Yeah, go ahead. I jumped out of order, fine.
On June 26th, we did have a NACO meeting. There are a few things that I would like to share with you. NACO has provided an update on our participation in the SCR III Working Group. That is the legislative working group that's looking for ways to reform and modernize our Nevada's transportation funding system. So, we have a seat at that table, and the chair actually outlined some of the things. And their position is that any new or revised funding source should provide a proportional share to our counties in order to support our county road construction and maintenance. They also wanted an update on the different counties that have proposed the diesel tax, of course, which also helps to maintain the county roads. On another one, we had in public lands, we had the draft letter that was approved to the Bureau of Land Management, and that was the environmental assessment for targeted and prescribed grazing or annual grasses in the Great Basin regions. And we did comment on that, of course, and that was available to you last time I knew and still is available through the NACO website. But the biggest thing is that they are working more closely with our ranchers on all of that prescribed grazing. One of our speakers actually was Eric Spratley, who is the Executive Director of the Nevada Sheriff's and Chiefs Association. And he wanted to give us an update of what was going on because of the special session, which, of course, is going on now, but at the time, it was upcoming. And he's real concerned about several things. The Attorney General, Aaron Ford, has put out a proposed list of some ideas with, they said, over seventy-some recommendations and suggestions that the legislature look at. And one of the biggest things that is affecting everybody and up in arms is the qualified immunity, and that they will remove that, looking to remove that. That's an interesting point, because my Justice and Public Safety National Meeting that we held on the first of July actually gave us a bill that was proposed in the House by some of the Democrats that actually wants to remove the qualified immunity from our police force and sheriffs. And I don't know how familiar you are with it. There's a lot of myths of what it will do and what it won't do. But the scary part is how they could even think of removing it. It's almost as silly to me as saying, "Defund the Police Department." It's like, where are we going? The things that qualified immunity doesn't protect are just things that are unconstitutional or that are deemed unconstitutional after the fact. This would make it retroactive. I mean, I don't know how we'd have anybody ever step up to protect us, anyway.
You would not.
Mitch McConnell, yeah. Mitch McConnell spoke on that and said, "It's never, ever, ever gonna pass the Senate." Well, we don't know, but that's a nice point, anyway. So, it gives us a little bit of hope somewhere. I do have a list of all the recommendations that Aaron Ford made, if any of you are interested in that part. And, as you know, we did receive information from our Senator Jackie Cortez Mastos on our PILF funding, which was approved for the fiscal year 2020. We have 3,333,712 acres, and for that, this year, we will receive $1,069,164 in Lander County. SRS was also approved, I understand, and I think it went down, but I didn't get the final figures on that. And our NACO does have our annual national meeting coming up, which will be held virtually on the 13th and again on the 20th. Thank you.
Art?
Almost had a PULAC meeting again. No quorum was the reason for canceling the meeting. I texted Ira Hanson this morning. I asked him how he thought the legislative session was going. And he said that there is a chance that they won't go after the net proceeds this session, that they'll wait until the regularly scheduled session. So, we might get a pass this time. That's all I have.
Okay. Attended via teleconference the hospital board meeting last night, and they had received $3.4 million for the cares, which is wonderful for that. It's going to help, because they have, with just the short time since March, the hospital has shown a $400,000 loss in revenue from people being afraid to go to the doctor. And that, which is amazing, that they're afraid to go in. So, you know, and it's kinda still, it's picking up a little bit, but not anything like it was. So, we still are, you know, showing it a lot, that, you know, $400,000, that was crazy in that amount of time. But that is where we're at. So, those were the biggest points of the meeting. And so, that was the only one that I attended. Brian, did you attend any meeting?
No report, Kathy.
Okay. And I don't, I'll check again. Judy, are you out there? All right. So, well, with that being said, we'll move on to the staff reports on meetings, conferences, seminars attended.
Okay, real quick, our transition's going real well with Bert and I. So, that's right on track. And I did wanna touch base on the cares money. As far as I know, which was as of yesterday, I forgot to ask Judy this morning, we haven't received that million dollars yet. But once it's received in the county, it'll have to be brought to the commissioners on how to disperse it. Nothing's been put in place yet. So, once that process is brought before this board, and you guys decide how you want to disperse it, it is available for a variety of things. It's very flexible. But that'll be brought to you in the future. I would ask Commissioner Ansho that we move item number eight, the lander leaf item, to number one. We are probably gonna have to table it, and I believe Ms. Conner's looking for some guidance here, so we can handle that pretty quick, so she doesn't have to sit through the whole meeting. Thanks.
Okay, very good. All right. Moving on, for public comment, for non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on non-agendized items at the board meeting, if any. A discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner. The public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment? Okay. Huh? Oh. There he is. Do we have public comment? Okay. Okay.
Muted. Unmuted.
Are you guys still there?
We're still here. We're, Bert, they can't hear you. Bert's doing public comment, he's gotta turn on the mic. There we go.
Okay. So, we have a plaque here for Keith for his eight years of service to Lander County. And we also have another one for Ms. Marla, that Leslie will draw up, for her 27 years of public service to Lander County. She was I'm gonna speak off the cuff for just a minute. And I expected Liz to speak or somebody else to speak beside me, but I got nominated. So, as I looked at these plaques this morning, I'm looking, I'm going, "Man, that's what you give somebody for eight years and 27 years of service?" You know, that's, what are they gonna do with all their free time? And the truth of it is, is none of their time that they're gonna have ahead of them was free. They put their time in here for the county, and they paid it forward to have this free time, this retirement, and enjoy it. Eight years may not sound like a lot, 27 years sounds like a hell of a lot. But, you know, they've sacrificed relationships with family, with friends, some of them spouses, with everything to make this place of Lander County a better place. You know, I hope that when you guys take this time that wasn't free, you go enjoy it, and I hope Keith makes himself a bridle horse or something nice. Hope you make a couple of good friends out of your dogs, and, you know, and rebuild them friendships that you and family relationships, everything that you guys have spent and lost because of the time you've put into Lander County. It doesn't go unnoticed or unappreciated, regardless of all the little nonsense that goes on around here. It was appreciated. So, I hope you guys take that free time and pay for it. That's my thank you to you guys. I don't know what else to say to something like this, other than everybody who puts their time in for the county, that's pretty special. It's to make it a better place for all of us.
Agreed.
So, thank you.
Bert, could we maybe take the pictures during our first break? If everyone would stay and take some pictures?
You bet. Does anybody wanna picture with Keith?
I'm sorry.
I was giving him a hard time about getting a picture earlier today, so I wasn't gonna let him slide for free on that. But, of course.
I think there's plenty of pictures of Keith, though. Post all.
Those are all on Facebook, actually.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Marla.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to say something about Marla and Keith. Marla, I've had the pleasure of working with Marla for a few years now. And I have to say, she has worked with DMV for these years in the Recorder's Office and the Assessor's Office at one time at Transfer. But you deal with such negativity, whether you're a sweet and uplifting person or not. And to go through that for 27 years is something very, very remarkable. Working for any institution, any place, any job, for over five years now is a remarkable achievement in itself. I think she's amazing. She has been on the Union. She has done many, many different things for Lander County. Been on boards, been supportive in so many areas, and is currently on the hospital board. She has given so much of her life to this community and to the individuals that work with her. She's been an asset to me tremendously, faithful, always there, did her job. She worked with people, tried to do the best she could do, tried to keep us all on the straight and narrow when we kinda relaxed. And I just wanna tell her, myself personally, how much I appreciate her dedication and her kindness and her willingness to smile every day she walked in. So, Marla, I just wish you the best future, a new door, a new horizon. Don't forget us, we're behind you all the way. But carry on, okay? Okay, I'll just give you your
It's been a pleasure to work I hunger, but you know that's code. It's been a pleasure to work for Lander County for 27 years. Almost 27, it's a little short. But I'm going to miss you all. I'm going to miss the public. I'm going to miss my office and Leslie and my friends. But it's been a good time, and it's been fun. It's been, I've shed tears, I've had laughter, I've made a lot of really good friends. And I wanna thank you as Lander County officials and Lander County people for the support that you've have given me through the years. And I appreciate and love each one of you. And I've offended you, sorry, pardon the job. I wanna thank you for all the memories and the good times, and for Leslie for putting up with me, because sometimes I'm difficult. I can't imagine that sometimes. But I wanna thank everyone for this, and I hope to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Marla.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item been taken from the consent item and agenda and discussed and acted upon separately during the meeting. Consent agenda material are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. Number one, approval of July 9th, 2020 agenda notice. Number two, approval of January 23rd, 2020 meeting minutes. Three, approval of February 27th, 2020 meeting minutes. Four, approval of May 7th, 2020 Special Budget Workshop meeting minutes. Five, approval of May 14th, 2020 meeting minutes. Six, approval of May 19th, 2020 Special Budget Workshop meeting minutes. Seven, approval of May 21st, 2020 meeting minutes. Eight, approval of May 28th, 2020 Special Meeting Minutes. Nine, approval of June 11th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Ten, approval of payroll change requests.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
I did not receive any minutes from number three, February 27th, through number nine, approval of June 11th. So, with that, I make a motion, we approve number one, the agenda notice, number two, the minutes for January 23rd, and number 10, approval of the payroll change requests.
Chairman, I have a question on number 10. I need some clarification.
Okay.
There were some that were just emailed through. I understand the cost of living and the merit, but on a few of them, there is anniversary? Was there an increase for anniversary?
Just a minute, Brian.
I just need clarification.
Brian, Brian, hold on. I'll pull number 10, so we can discuss that. My motion, it is for number one and number two.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'll second that motion.
Any public comment? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Muted. Unmuted.
All right.
Okay, number 10?
Yes, we're gonna go ahead and go down to number 10.
Okay, I did cut Brian off. Commissioner Sparks, go ahead with your clarification you needed on the payroll change request.
Yeah, I just noticed on some of that were emailed through that we had, there was some notation for anniversary. So, was there an increase for anniversary? And then, if so, I don't understand that.
Brian, this is Liz. Yes, so their anniversary date falls in July. So, when it says anniversary, that's for a salary employee. Hourly employees, they call it merit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve number 10, the payroll change request.
Sir.
Second.
Any public comment? All right, hearing all in favor?
Aye.
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 So, do we wanna go ahead and do number eight?
Muted. Unmuted.
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. Karen Conner, for possible action to approve/disapprove the amendment of the medical marijuana application for lander leaf growers to include recreation and allow lander leaf growers to pay the application fee to Lander County. All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, I'm happy to report that the state issued lander leaf growers a medical license and a recreational license on June 26th. I, that was late, on the 26th. I came down on the 29th to, 'cause it was my understanding that if they gave me a recreational license, that I would just be amending my application and pay the $10,000 origination fee. But then Ted said that I had not properly applied for the recreational license. So, I have amended the application and am prepared to pay the fees if you could approve that.
Ted, if you're on the line, could you give some clarification, please?
Okay. First, if the state has given her a license now for recreation, well, medical, she would have to, as she said, amend her application to include recreational. As far as I know, there is no amended application. Because what happens is the application, or the amended application, would be submitted, along with the money, to the admin department. The admin department will then take the time to make sure she qualifies before putting it on the agenda and letting the county commissioners decide whether or not to give that certification. Now, this is an easy one to give certification to, because they've already approved her to grow medical. And when she submitted her first application for medical, he did not have a recreational. So, she's applied for that, as she said. But I don't believe the admin department has any proof that she was given a recreational. And that's part of the application process, so that the county can ascertain whether or not all the provisions have been complied with.
Ted, I have a quick question for you. So, she has a, it looks like a two-page amended application. If we accept that today, then admin can start going through it, possibly put it on the next agenda for the commission to approve. So, does the amended agenda cover the needs, or is it a complete, whole-new application?
Well, it depends on what's changed in her life, Keith.
Okay, I'll look it over, and I'll, we'll get it emailed to you today, this morning. And then, if there needs to be additional, a full application, or if this amended agenda works, just, you can let Bert know, and if it's ready, it could be on the next agenda.
Right. You guys, the admin department has all the policies and procedures, it's all the package. I don't have that stuff, Keith. That's the admin department.
Okay, I, yeah.
I'd be certainly, I'd certainly happy to give a legal analysis, but I don't have all the paperwork that you guys have. An application's supposed to be submitted to your department. Your department's supposed to research it, make sure everything's valid, as stated in the application. And then, you make a recommendation to the county commissioner, whether or not she can get this.
Right, yeah. I understand that part of it, Ted. I just wasn't sure if it was an entire new application, or if the amended application would cover it. So, we'll review it, and then we'll talk with you. But for now, we have to table it, or at least get her amended application and review it. And then, it can be, the recommendation can be given to the commissioners at the next or at a future meeting.
Right. I note that some things have certainly changed, the date, when she got the state license. She hasn't even turned over a copy of that to the county yet. So, the county needs to have all this stuff before it's put on the agenda.
Okay, all right, we'll take care of it. We'll get it worked out. Thank you.
Is it possible that the commissioners could approve a contingent upon approval of the admin, so I don't have to come back before you again? Because basically, all that was amended is that I marked the recreational box here, along with the medical. And that's the only change for this application, really. And I have certificates of my licenses right here, and I have the money to give. So, if you could just approve a contingent upon whatever they need to do, I wouldn't have to come back in front of you.
Ms. Conner?
How can they approve it until the admin department researches what you've applied for?
Are you local here, or do you travel?
Yes, I'm local here.
Okay.
So, what is, I'm sorry, I mean, interrupt you. So, what is it, Ted, that they have, and just so I'm understanding, 'cause I don't understand this whole process, so bear with me. So, what does, when the admin receives the application, what, do they have to contact the state to make sure that everything is correct? Or what do they have to do once the admin office receives it? What's that process?
They check the address, they check the dates, they check the state, make sure that she was given the provisional license, and make sure the background checks. It's been how long since the last one? Over a year. Things are not the same, Madam Chair. They're not the same, they're a year later.
Okay.
So, we have a checklist
Yes.
that we'll go through.
And so, with that being said, with the background check and all of that being done, unfortunately, I mean, that this, even though it's a simple change on that, and I respect that, it's a pain, it's still a change, unfortunately. And so, with that being said, we can get that, 'cause that's something that can be completed by the next meeting. I mean, we can have all of that done by two weeks. So, we're making sure that we're doing it right, not jumping over a spot.
So, are you saying that we need to go and be fingerprinted again?
No, I don't, I don't know.
Because the state really only requires that every three years, so.
So, yeah, what we'll do is, we'll go down the check, or Bert's staff will go down the checklist, and then they'll make any notifications that they need to make to you. Okay?
So, unfortunately.
So, I'll just submit this paperwork to you today?
Hey, you can leave it with me, and then I'll give, or Bart, leave it with Bert, and then they can go through it.
Can she go ahead and make the request to be on the next agenda? And then, if there's a problem, they'll let her know? Okay, so we have
Madam Chair?
Huh?
It's the admin department that places it on the agenda, once they've done the background.
Okay.
Now, how long does a background check take?
I just don't, my department.
Robert? The question's to you. 'Cause what she's saying is, the state only requires a background check every three years, so.
This is real quick for the sheriff's office. Other than take the fingerprints, we have nothing to do with this. And the fingerprints, if they're transmitted electronically, they come back to the county on their account. So, we don't see the replies either.
How long does that usually take when you guys get back?
I was gonna say, if it takes as long as it takes the state, I'm gonna be a while.
Bert Ramis, for the record, but I don't, so if she is in compliance with the state, then she's, that's all the background check is, I believe Ted's referring to.
Okay.
Is we have to make sure that she is in compliance with the state, not out of compliance anywhere, and do our research, and then we move forward. It is not a new background check and a new
Okay, all right.
going through the whole process. We just have to make sure she is up to date, and that shouldn't take us but a day or two.
And I was gonna say, the cannabis board has now put out where you can research who's got licenses and if they're current. So, that's a simple
So, yeah, you can get all that stuff
We will have her on the next agenda.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to number one, yeah. For possible, my glasses keep fogging up. For possible action to approve/disapprove the payment of bills.
I make a motion that we approve all of the bills except check number
Somebody needs to mute their phone, please.
208209 and 208279, which is made out to Point S.
All right, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, do we have any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
I now make a motion, we approve check number two zero eight, two zero nine, and two zero eight, two seven nine.
All right. Any public comment? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I abstain.
All right.
Muted.
Unmuted.
For, number two, for possible action to approve, disapprove dog park location for Austin, Nevada.
Thank you, yes, I've had a few people in Austin that have asked about a dog park there. Not only for our locals, which is interesting, because there's no place to really run your dogs anywhere for local people. They don't have big backyards in Austin, except the park. And of course, they're not supposed to be running in the park. And then we have to think about Highway 50 and how busy that is for our visitors coming through. And when they take their dogs out, we're in the same situation. So, we had been discussing this with, with our current temporary, permanent county manager, Bert Ramos. And he was gonna take a look and see if perhaps we could think about something at the park. And hopefully you did, and you can come up and give us some information on that. I also want to put on the record that LITA has been looking at this. It's been brought up in many areas for just a quick, not necessarily a park, but a quick temporary dog relief center with some water, which might be in a different location. So, we're actually considering that on the LITA side, which may come before us later. But right now, it was just to get some input on where we thought we might be able to put a dog park.
So, Bert Ramos, for the record, the, the only place that I can see in Austin that would be a viable dog park, when me and Commissioner Waits spoke down there, is that they want to be able to run a little bit and have some room to get out, is on the backside of the lower field in Austin, below the park. There's some old monkey bars that run across there. And, and we may be able to, you know, take, say, 30 feet and run it along the length of that fence, and, you know, fence it in, where people can pull off there, there at the bottom of the park, and still not affect the baseball field, or, and it be a grassy area, or the park itself, and have enough room for dogs to run. But other than that, there's not a whole lot of area within Austin, unless somebody else has a better idea, that we could put one for dogs to actually be able to run.
No, I didn't, but I wondered, on the other side of the monkey bars, that's not any part of a dugout or anything for the baseball diamond, is it?
No, it's on the complete backside, so it's.
Then that would be totally separate, and that's where the road is, right there, for people to pull off.
Correct.
So, that would, that would probably be an excellent place if, if that works, okay? Michelle, do we have anybody in Austin at all to comment on this?
No.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve a dog park location at, at the end of the current baseball diamond in Austin. And ask our county manager and public works director to proceed with that.
Okay, where would you like me to take the money for the fencing?
How much money are we looking at?
A few thousand dollars. I mean, it's, it's a little bit more expensive, because Austin has the moab, but, yeah, probably 5,000 would cover us. Where we can put a spigot in there where people can water their dogs.
We have a budget, basically, for Austin that we could certainly do. And I mean, if we run out of funds, we have to amend the budget later on. But we could currently take, we have enough to take it out of just the Austin budget, do we not?
The town fund?
Yeah.
Like and Sullivan, for the record.
How about this, I'll come back with where we're taking the money from, and not to exceed 5,000. Will that work?
Yes, absolutely, I'm kind with it.
I'll second that motion.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Robin D. from.
Aye.
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 Hi, Robin D. from Austin.
Aye. You got public comment?
Yeah, is there a public comment?
Yes.
Can barely hear you, go ahead. Sorry about that, we can't hardly hear you.
Robin D. Robin, hello?
Okay, Robin, go ahead.
Yes, hi, I'm on here. Austin is great with the idea of a dog park, and we love the location. And it would be fabulous for both residents and our visitors coming through. So, we do appreciate this being on the agenda and all of you looking at it.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
So, did we get a vote for all in favor?
Aye.
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 Ryan, go say.
All right, moving on?
Muted. Unmuted.
For possible action to approve, disapprove the donation of the 2007 Ford 16-passenger van to Austin Senior Center by T-Rex Bike Shop, Alco, Nevada.
Thank you, we have had some discussion in Austin regarding a senior bus for many years, but we just haven't been able to think about putting it on the budget and how we could possibly justify that kind of money that we're looking at. Because we did approve a new senior center, a new senior center, actually, a new senior bus for the senior center in Battle Mountain. And we're still holding that, that's a little over $100,000. And we were kind of thinking, maybe taking their current bus and moving that down to Austin. But it doesn't have very comfortable seats. My understanding is they're more like the seats in a school bus. And if Austin goes out of town anywhere with this, if we go to Eureka, to Opera House, Sore, or if we go to Fallon, or for, you know, any kind of medical appointments or something like that, we thought, wow, we need more comfortable seats on something like this. We also were looking at it, perhaps, since our, our medical center has actually closed in Kingston, that we might be able to go out and pick up people and bring them into Austin for the clinic. So, there's several things that people were kind of excited about doing, if we had a bus to do it. And so, actually, T-Rex stepped up, and I'll correct that, it's T hyphen R I X, it's after Rick, that's why it's T-Rex. And they stepped up in Alco and said, you know, we have this van that we have purchased, and it's in pretty good shape. And we would like to donate that to, to the Lander County and have it specified. I imagine it would probably work through the senior center, but be able to use it for more community, things that we can do in the South. I think the estimated value was 10,000 on it. It's an older one, but, you know, we'd have to, right now, it's in perfect running condition. But you never know about used things, of what we might have to. But other than, you know, we put Freon in it, and, and even the tires are good tires. Although, depending on the traveling, we might need tires soon if we travel a lot, because we, it's 100 miles everywhere they go or more. So, of course, that's in consideration. But because of the actual number that it has, with 16 people, and of course, it has a wheelchair, you know, naturally, everything, naturally, of course. We actually could social distance, so still use it now, so.
So, then we do have a motion to approve the donation?
I'll make a motion, we approve the donation of the 16-passenger van to the Austin Senior Center by T-Rex Bike Shop.
All right, do we have a second? One second. Do we have any public comment?
Commissioners?
Yes.
Uh, could you amend that motion to be to Lander County for the express purpose of use by the, by the Austin Senior Center?
All right, Brian, would you amend your motion?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to basically add what Ted just stated.
All right, do we have, I'll second that. With no public comment, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Muted. Unmuted.
For possible action to approve, disapprove, request of the National Collaboration of Women and History Sites to install a suffrage centennial marker and location to be determined.
Boy, this is an Austin commission right now. Should have had this meeting in Austin, right? Yes, there is some backup material on this, of course. And naturally, we just, we had approved the one for Battle Mountain, and that just happened to hit the papers with our commissioner and the Historical Society, and the one approved in Battle Mountain. Actually, the group goes through, the National Collaborative Women's History Sites has been working around Nevada to do this. And so, they finally approached us in Austin, and we, we turned that over to the Historical Society to kind of coordinate for us. There is a draft in here and what the text would actually be. And the marker, we would prefer to be at the Visitor Center, which is 87 Main Street in Austin. And it's kind of exciting for us if, if you folks had a chance to read some of the history on it. But I, I did want to share just a couple of things with those of you that have not had a chance to see this. The background, actually, was Frances Slaven, who was born in Canada, and she moved to Austin when she was 21, and she was actually a schoolteacher. And she married John Williamson in Austin a few years later. They had six children. She became the principal, he was the superintendent of schools, and then he moved on, actually, to be in our state politics. But the interesting thing I wanted to pass on, she had a really rough life, but she did a lot in Austin. And of course, several things that worked, and as we all are familiar with the 19th Amendment, many, many women dedicated their whole lives to, to getting that passed. She did later move to San Francisco when the 19th Amendment was actually passed for all the states to ratify. She was, she was alive at the time, but she passed away the end of that year, and she is buried in Austin. But there's a couple of quotes in here that I wanted to share with you, which I thought were, were really quite special. Of course, the example that she sat with the activism and everything, it was wonderful. And she was a journalist, she wrote for the Nevada Citizen. She said, promoting the enhancement of women and the ethics of civil government ordained in the Declaration of Independence and established in the Constitution of the United States of America. And I thought that was so cool. But the people that, not everybody agreed on that 19th Amendment. And the people who were against it, or in opposition, I wanted to quote, I just thought this was so cool. It said, "Many did not support her cause. Those in opposition to equal suffrage did not state that women could not handle the responsibilities of governing, but that women should not be dragged down to the level of political work because they were too good to wade in the slums of politics as men do." And with that, yeah, she has a wonderful history. With that, I would make a motion that we approve for the suffrage marker to be put in our Visitor Center in Austin at 87 Main Street.
Excuse me, can you also put in your motion to submit the letter to the Suffrage Committee, and either myself or Bert, depending on when we get it done, can sign it?
And also to submit a letter to the Suffrage Committee and authorize our county manager to sign that.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead in a second, any, any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Muted. Unmuted.
Number five, for possible action to approve, disapprove the transfer of the county's 2020 private activity bond cap, P A B C, to Nevada Rural Housing Authority, N R H A.
This is something that we do every year, because if we, if we don't spend the money and have a place for it, it actually does go back to the Nevada Rural Housing. But since we don't have any plans, we try and do that ahead of time so that they can increase their budget and know what they're working at for the year. The only problem I had with this is that they had included a resolution in their paperwork for us to approve. And we don't have that on the agenda, so that does have to come back to us. So, I would make a motion that we approve the transfer of county's 2020 private activity bond cap to the Nevada Rural Housing Authority and authorize our clerk to sign the certificate of transfer, and then have the resolution done to be brought back on our next commission meeting.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
Any public comment?
Madam Chair, this is Diana.
Yes.
Hello, hi, this is Diana Arviza with the Nevada Rural Housing Authority.
Yes.
Hi, I, if I may, I'd like to share a quick update.
All right, yes, please do.
I do have a very loud echo coming back, so I'm not sure if you're hearing it the same way.
I'm not.
Okay, well, then I'll proceed. It's a pleasure to be here with you virtually anyway. I certainly appreciated hearing about the approval right before my item on the women's history. I'm looking forward to driving through Austin and stopping to take a look at that. But, back to the private activity bond cap, thank you very much for your approval there. I did want to thank Lander County for your long history of partnership with the Nevada Rural Housing Authority. You have been with us since we launched the Home at Last program in 2006. The very first down payment assist program helped 51 families. And here we are, 14 years later, we've helped our 9,000th family. We've provided 1.8 billion in affordable mortgages across rural Nevada. We've provided 52.1 million in down payment assistance, and 27 million in federal tax savings have been returned to rural home buyers. And that money's been able to be reinvested right back into your local community. In Lander County, I'm pleased to say we've helped 75 home buyers. And Lander County has transferred, let's see, a total of 2.7 million in your unused allocation of private activity bond caps since 2006. And the return on your investment has been about 11.4 million in affordable mortgages returned to Lander County residents. I do want to thank you again for that partnership, and I just wanted to have the opportunity to answer any questions that anybody might have today.
I, I don't have any questions. I thank you for joining us, even though it's virtual. And I want you to know, we have your little puppy up that is a Home at Last t-shirt.
Oh, I love that, thank you. Happy to bring more anytime, as soon as this COVID thing is lifted.
All right, thank you very much for joining us.
I appreciate very much your support.
And for the update.
Oh, you're very welcome. Okay, nice talking with you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
So, we're ahead, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
None opposed? All right.
Madam Chair, can we take a break?
We may, take a break.
Muted. Unmuted.
All right, we have two things left, so. For number six, for possible, possible action to approve appointment of Louis A. Lanny for the Lander County Board of Equalization term lasting from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2024.
I make a motion to approve Louis Lanny.
I'll second.
Somebody on the board. I make a motion to approve Louis Lanny for the Lander County Board of Equalization. His term will last from July 1st to 2020 to June 30th, 2024. Thank you, Louis.
Yes, thank you.
I will second that motion.
Any public comment?
Okay, Marla Sam for the record. I'd like to thank Louis for running, or for being appointed and coming to our board. I'm on the board and I really look forward to working with him.
Very good, thank you very much. So all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Commissioner, just so you know, it was advertised properly.
Oh, okay. All right, TO engineers, discussion only, introduction by TO engineers regarding their availability to provide engineering services to Lander County Airport at the end of 2020. Thank you.
Same time you did, Commissioner.
Then would somebody fancy us on down to Austin, Courtney?
No.
It's.
Yes, we'll take care of it.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're with TO Engineers, myself, JD Hightower, and Kevin Bissell, TO Engineers. We just wanted to come back and get in front of you again, as we have done over the past few years, every eight or nine months, and the airport selection is coming up for renewal. Typically, the county and the FA coordinate, where the FA likes to have the selection process being performed every five years or so, and that's coming up at the end of this year.
And this is the Austin Airport, right?
Maybe somewhere in the future. But we are very interested, and we continue to be interested as we have been over the years, and TO Engineers, Kevin and myself, and several other people are, just want to make sure that you know that we're definitely interested. So TO itself, as an engineering company, has over 155 variety of engineers and team members that are part of the company. Of those, approximately 45 are dedicated aviation professionals. So I don't think that there's very many firms in this region that can say that they have that many aviation personnel that are dedicated towards aviation in this region. So we're pretty proud of that. As you see, we do the aviation, but we also have transportation engineers, land development, municipal, environmental, water resources, wastewater survey, and landscape architecture. So we're a full-service engineering firm. There's a lot of things that we can do in-house, where some firms may have to go out of house and partner in subcontract. We do do subcontracts with a variety of other firms. We do try and engage local firms to help out with the subcontracting. In fact, I'm friends with a local surveying company, and also a local geotech company. So we try to use those as much as possible when we go into locations. But we have the ability in-house to be able to do all of the real heavy engineering needs for that. Next slide. I myself have over seven years of experience and knowledge at Austin Airport. I love that little airport, as you can see a picture there of Joe and Frank, and I love that plane. That's one of my favorite planes there. I think that's, is that the Coyote, is that three? Coyote three, Patsy? Coyote two? But, so it's very neat, and I was just talking with Patsy this morning about some of the developments that have been made over that airport, and I'm happy to say that I was part of those developments that have taken place and pretty excited about it. Next slide. Also, of course, up here at Battle Mountain Airport, Battle Mountain has gone through some changes and stuff over the past several years, and it's a pretty exciting airbase, and it has actually a lot of history to it. It was originally developed as a bomber base during World War II, and that was kind of the constructs of it. So that's why it has the multiple runways and why they're so big. Next slide. And now it's being used as, as a lot of people know, as the air attack base for firefighting and stuff. And that is key, because really, Battle Mountain is one of, is not the most important firebase operations in all of northern Nevada. With the runways there, the length that they are, the width that they are, the condition that they are, they're able to handle the heavy tankers. And as you can see on that bottom photo, that, those are pictures out of Battle Mountain. All these pictures are of the two airports. Those are two pretty large tankers, and they do operate out of Battle Mountain when they have the big fires and stuff in the area. And it is hugely helpful. So we're aware of that, we understand what your airports are here for, and we have more than just a cursory knowledge of the airport. So next slide. Some of the other airports we work at, Freeman Memorial Airport, up at Hayneson Valley, mountainous area, you guys are probably very familiar with that. We work in with airports that, like that, where they have a lot of expensive aircraft running around in the mountain region. Next one. And we work over at Nampa. Both Kevin and I have worked, done projects over at Nampa Airport. In fact, the picture on the left there is a picture of Kevin at a, at a very big meeting there, public meeting, and I'll kind of transition over to him.
Yeah, so I'm Kevin Bissell, and I've worked TO Engineers for about 28 years, so maybe I'll get one of those plaques someday, I don't know. But so I've been with the aviation group within our company for most of that time, and I've seen a lot of growth in our company and the addition of, going from basically a small group of five or six individuals to the 40 people that we have in airports now. And one of our longest-standing clients is McCall Municipal Airport, and I've worked at that airport since 1997. And one of the things that we specialize in are rural, mountainous airports. McCall gets a lot of snow. We help other smaller airports that have a hard time budgeting for projects, and so we like to act as a part of your team and help you find that funding, help you do the, work through the FAA reporting that's required, because that's fairly extensive as well. So, so McCall's an example of an airport that we've worked at and helped for a long time. And the Baker City Municipal Airport, over in Baker City, Oregon, again, high elevation, small airport, small city, they have a hard time budgeting for projects, so we try to help them find and maximize the grant funding that's available through the FAA, and in this case, through the Oregon Department of Aviation. Grant County Regional Airport, John Day, Oregon's also one of my airport clients. And again, mountainous airport, small community, and we helped them secure, last year, in, I guess, 2019, a FAA supplemental discretionary grant, which was one of only two of those grants that was awarded in Oregon that provided 100% FAA federal funding for the project. And the project that they have is a run-through project, and we're starting construction on that project this summer. So we really advocate for our airport clients on both the state and federal level. And that's our, kind of our, in a nutshell, presentation. So if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Well, we appreciate you coming along and bringing this information to us.
We appreciate your time.
And the time to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I know we have it on the agenda for, well, I guess maybe it's not on yet, but maybe we could just think about if we awarded a new contract, we would probably want to award it by what, September? What's a good time, if you have it?
Contract, I'm sorry.
Yeah, our current contract is, will be up at the end of the year.
December.
Right. So we're going to be looking at now actually an alternative, which is always a good thing to have options. But I'm wondering what the timeframe is of when we need to let them know and when we need to make our decisions. So September, October?
I would, I would think probably September, October is probably a pretty good time. You could put out your request for proposals, get it going, and then know what is, Bert would know and the commission would know which way it's going to be going.
Okay, can we put that on your calendar? That sounds wonderful. Thank you. And I know we appreciated your information before when you were here and your update, JD. It's always a pleasure to see you again and work with you. So thank you.
Nice, thank you very much.
And nice to meet you again, Kevin.
All right, going on to, from our temporary correspondence reports, future agenda items.
Okay, Bert Ramuskin, I'd like to just give the commission a quick update of what has been happening. I missed the initial part of the meeting. I'm not sure what Keith reported on, but we had one application for the Public Works Director interim, and that was Donnie Prince. It's a position that can be appointed for the interim of the position and then go back before the commission for ratification if it works. His application was reviewed, and he meets all the qualifications, so we did not do interviews. And I just want to be, I'm just putting this on the record to be transparent to the public and everybody, so nobody thinks that there was anything done out of line to put anybody in any position.
It's an interdepartmental transfer, right?
Yes and no, because it's, it can be an appointed position.
Oh, because he's a supervisor?
Yes. But interdepartmental, because they get the first shot at applying for these jobs. So when I say yes and no, it's yes because he has first crack at it, and no because it's appointed. So that'll come back before you guys. And then I also would like to put two or three options for this commission to choose from for our risk assessment, different companies to do a risk assessment, and bring that back to you guys and get that started immediately, you know, as of this next, next agenda, and kind of get it lined out where everybody's departments fall. Other than that, I have nothing else to throw out there. Mainly, main thing I want to do is let you guys know about our one applicant for.
Why don't you stay, since you're county manager, why don't you stay? Because this applies to you. In our correspondence, we have the quarterly report actually in here for our public defender?
Okay.
Okay, and that falls under you?
Yep.
Because it's contracted. And if you want to take a look in the actual book under correspondence, it's one of the, one of the first ones. Yeah, in the back, under correspondence. Under the contract, they do quarterly reports to us. And also, we have to have the final end of the state on July, they, by July, because they publish one in July for contracts of service and anybody that has public defense services. So when I looked at this, I thought, well, this is interesting. I'm assuming, I'm assuming their quarter is calendar year, but there's not even a date on this. So if this were separated, you wouldn't even know what quarter it was. So when you go back to their office, I would appreciate you asking them to please designate some kind of dates in here of when it was, not just quarter one, quarter two, but even if they'd have put a date anywhere on the letter, that would have helped. And the other thing is, when I added up everything, actually the total so far, the first two quarters are 72 cases. Last year, our whole total was 125. So we really are running high this year with everything that's going on. Anyway, the numbers don't come out, Bert. If you look at quarter number one, there's 38. Quarter number two is 34. You add those together, it's 72. If you go over to the totals, the totals are up 61. So we're missing an 11 in there, and I think that 11 is the drug court per quarter that wasn't carried over properly. So I think you might want to contact our public service people and have them do a correction on their quarterly reports. Thank you.
Got it. So do we have any public comment?
Yeah. So I would like to say that I appreciate everything that's been done by the commission. I appreciate the opportunity that was given to me to be the county manager for my term. I really want to express my appreciation to my staff, from Bert to Liz to Lakin and Caitlin, Kyla and Anna, and then everybody else that's been a part of this. They are really what makes the county manager position effective and takes a lot of the weight off of them. So I wish them all the best, especially Bert. And with that, Bert, I'd like you to, come up here for a sec. It's not a big thing, but I'm going to take mine down, and I'm going to put yours on, okay? There you go. Thanks, everybody. And best of luck. That's all I have. Thanks.
Well, for the record, I'd like to put on our thank yous and our wishes for the very best to you, Keith.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Marla Sam for the record. I've worked with Keith for eight years.
Come on up, Marla. Thank you. We didn't make you come up before, but.
I know, thank you.
And I've worked with him with the union, I've worked with him on the hospital, on the ambulance, on the insurance committee, on about everything there is I've done. And I have found him to be wonderful to work with, and personally, he's my friend, and I think that he has done a great service to Lander County and has worked very hard and been very dedicated. And I know that his wife has, has been home alone a lot, and I am sorry to see him go, but I know that Bert's going to come in and do a great job for us. And I just want to say thank you to Keith for all his help, all his understanding, his shoulder to cry on, his shoulder to complain on, and his smile when he knew I needed one. And I just want to say thank you for everything, and I wish you and Shelley just the best. And I will be coming up through that area, so have a room ready for me.
Here we go.
All right, any public comment? Very good. Would that be a motion to adjourn?
To make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Thank you.
Muted. This conference is no longer being recorded.